Yeah, it's over.
The back of my head always looks nice. The back of my head always looks nice.
Okay, call a meeting of order, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the April 20th, 2017 Town of Riverhead Planning Board Work Session. First item on our agenda today is Stonely Woods, Section Four. Charles is here, okay.
Mayor, can you bring the chair?
Oh, sure. Oh, thanks Greg.
Hi.
How are you doing?
You all know Grant Havacy who is from Stonely Woods?
How you doing with Stonely Woods?
The LLC, not the HOA, sorry.
Gotcha. Our problem is with the landscaping and we have put up money to assure that it would be done and Karen's gone out and looked at it. They've had some discussions because they did some things that were in place of what had normally or regularly been directed to do and they felt there was an improvement actually on what the board had asked for, so Grant's good to explain what he did.
Yeah, so the, you know, typically in these, I guess, these sumps, I guess the best way to describe it is the planting that was initially designed years ago was like a tall batched wild grass that would go in there and so years ago, the community, the residents, because there's multiple sumps throughout the community, decided that through neighboring community complaints that they didn't, A, they didn't aesthetically like the look of the original plantings that were done, the wild grass at the bottom of these basins and they decided to, you know, their concerns were there was vermin nesting, ticks, you know, all the things and so they wanted to pull it out, put like, I wouldn't say pebbles, you know, rocks that are...
There's...
Yeah, yeah, they're decent sized stones, kind of like a dry riverbed look and so aesthetically, so it was very pleasing, so as we moved down the line, we saw their, the residents' concerns and we saw neighboring community concerns, so we, a far more expensive alternative, put these, this kind of dry riverbed look throughout the community in these basins and we had felt that the performance of the drainage would be improved, the overall longevity of maintenance would be improved and also the issues of ticks and vermin nesting would just dissipate, so, I mean, we didn't think there would ever be an issue.
How long have you had them in?
Well, the issue that we're discussing today is probably, I would say only eight months, maybe, but the community itself has been built, it's probably ten years and the first one, the first basin that has the rocks has been in existence for, I'd say, at least eight or nine years.
Are weeds of things growing in between the rocks?
Well, I mean, you have to, there is some maintenance that has to be generic maintenance of these things, so with those, as long as they maintain to some degree.
I had been out there at the March and I gave the board a memo dated the 27th of March. There's still issues with, you know, dead buffer vegetation and keeling over buffer vegetation that wasn't corrected from the first visit, some erosion behind some of the units where there's a slope and one of the things I had brought up in the memo was that there was, you know, areas of erosion going down to this basin. As far as the vegetation, I only went out to check Section Four, but when I noticed that, you know, the, on the second visit that I asked, oh, so you've done this with all of the basins, let me take a look at the first basin you put in, so I did include a section, a photo of that in my memo, so if the board wants to just take a look at that.
So they've all been done this way with the gravel?
The residents, because remember, they've been in control of the community for a long time, so...
This, this is the oldest one.
The other three sections have been approved.
That's right. Oh, yeah, they've, it's just this phase, it's just this phase. I mean, realistically, if you think of the scope of this project, we're talking about nominal, conscious items.
And these are, these are pictures of the erosion going to this basin and, you know, what this basin looks like.
This you're saying is about eight months old, is this what you're referring to?
No, no, that one's the first one, that one's probably ten years old.
That's ten years old?
It's ten years old.
Well, you know, my concern would be that it would be overgrown with weeds and obviously that didn't happen, so if it's done properly, I mean, it looks a little more like better like this.
Is this the new one?
That's the new one.
It's the same landscape, it's smooth.
Yeah, I mean...
So you know he's probably done, he's probably put another alignment in there, you know.
Well, what we did was, well, there's a sand, because it has to be drainage.
Right, that's what I had indicated in my report, those are the two areas of erosion going to that ponding area.
Greg, any issues from an engineering standpoint during this?
I'm not an engineer.
What's that?
I'm not an engineer.
Which one is this from?
That's, that's the same one. The only, the only picture of the old one is that one over there that George is handling, holding.
You have any concerns about replacing the stones from the plantings?
Vinnie did a memo on this, Vinnie was out there recently, wasn't he?
Yeah, Vinnie said he didn't have an objection to it.
Were there any complaints from the residents in the area here with it?
They, no, they would, they preferred this, the reason why we did this was because the community's landscaper, we wound up hiring years later to be our installer as well, so he knows in tandem, he's continuing the maintenance moving forward, so he wanted to make sure that his residents were going to be happy, so this was actually, you know, again, his favorite thing to do.
What about the plantings that are failing?
Uh, could be some seasonal things that just happened, you know, fifteen acre section, so...
You know, these are some of the same plants that I saw last time I went out, so they just need to...
Well, they still need to be replaced.
They are, oh yeah, they did, yeah, we definitely did.
They are replaced already, the ones that she's showing us?
They replaced, she came on a subsequent visit and there were some tilting ones, we've staked those since, the erosion areas where there's grass erosion, we've just, to make it simple, instead of waiting for seed, we're just putting sod there, so...
Here?
Uh, is that, yeah, that way, that area.
And behind the units as well?
Yeah, well, there was some erosion with the seed that didn't take, yeah, we're gonna just, just put some sod there.
One of the concerns and the reason we're here too is that we had to do a has-built survey of the site, we had to give that to Mr. Codiello, and last week he approved that. The town is holding $50,000, or I'm holding $50,000.
Sixty, sixty-two.
And an escrow, and that was based on the survey and based on landscaping, so we're now done with the survey part of it, and it's really just the landscaping, we're still holding $60,000.
Is there an HOA in this Section Four?
There's HOA in all four sections.
Okay, can we get a letter from the homeowners association saying it's acceptable to them?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think they would not have a problem.
Okay. And then you agree to take, stabilize the areas that have eroded and replace all the dead shrubs?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sound good, everybody?
Yep, once that's done, then maybe we can release it, because...
Sure.
That was a good idea.
Yeah, it looks nice, nice.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, have a great day.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mary.
Oh, you're welcome. No, I just wanted to know what's under the rock?
Um, I think she said sand?
Yeah, it looks like sand.
Just sand, and no liner?
No, I don't believe so. All right, I guess I'm done.
Thank you.
Good to see you sitting there.
Thanks.
Okay, next item is Van de Wettering Light Lot Line Modification.
Good afternoon, everybody. What we have here is a pretty straightforward lot line modification. We have a, it involves two parcels, parcel one, which is located on Sound Avenue, is a 23.9 acre parcel, and parcel two, which is located to the north, behind it is a 2.7 acre parcel. Parcel one, right on Sound Avenue, is improved with greenhouses, an office...
Backwards, parcel two's on sound there. Parcel one is the, is the transfer, at least, I'm looking at the map, Greg.
All right, I, yeah, so, I mean, so you've got a main parcel, they're basically looking to transfer 1.53 acres from the residential parcel to, I'm sorry, to the residential parcel in the back. The parcel's improved with a single-family house, poolhouse, accessory structure, and currently, the property line goes through a pond that the residents have created, it's got a plastic liner in it. The purpose of the lot line modification is just so that they can capture their landscaped area as well as the pond on the residential parcel.
So which lot would have the pond now?
What's happened is the shaded area would be added from the farm parcel to the residential structure.
Okay.
When Alice and Jack built the house, they started fixing it up, landscaping, if you went to the home, you'd see, you'd think this was the residential area, but it's not because it's attached to the farm. And annually, we also go back and, they're doing some estate planning and trying to, you know, deal with matters, and every year they go back for refinancing, like a reformer, and we don't want to capture, we need to transfer this and then not put the new mortgage for the farm on this piece to be added to the residence, so it's a, it's really a little practical, so we're just adding a small area from the farm.
What is the explanation with the covenant that was recorded?
So I did some research, and that was actually back from the original subdivision of this whole parcel, which actually involved this lot in the back here, which is not really part of this subdivision, I think that's a lot, I think it's called 3.3. What that, I think what that covenant was, was establishing the access to both this parcel as well as the one back here, so...
Correct, it really is irrelevant...
Remains in place.
...and deals with the back, yeah.
Okay.
We're not trying to change it.
Yeah, it's just that it was declared on that part, on the residential parcel because that was part of the subdivision originally.
That back lot is a single and separate lot?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, just one of those things, and later in life, we're trying to move to, to do some family transfers and, and then deal with this, add this, because if you go down to the house or the swimming pool that's there and stuff, you see that, you would think this area that we're talking about, the shaded area, actually belonged to the house, because that's the way it's landscaped and made.
What's the zoning on there? Is it two acre?
Yeah, it's minimum two acre, but all the lots would be conforming under the zoning.
Oh, yeah.
The, actually, the northern end of the parcels are in RA 40, which is one acre zoning, and then the front part of it is in RA 80, which is two acre, but...
So this portion back here is...
Yeah, the, the zone line is kind of right up here.
So this is RA 40 and this is...
RA 40, yeah, so... They'll both be well, well over the requirements.
How many acres will this be now?
I believe it would be 22.4 acres after the transfer.
They're supposed to back parcel has public water.
I believe it, I believe it does actually, I believe there's something on the survey which shows a water line coming in from the north.
Oh, from the north?
Yeah, there's something...
Oh, okay.
Water line.
Yep.
Oh, from Bluff's Drive, I guess.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Was there any other questions?
Kind of cut and dry.
Yep.
Thanks, guys, beautiful day outside.
Yep.
Okay, next item is Bank of America ADA Upgrades.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good, good. My name's James Penosian with Stonefield Engineering, the site design engineer for the project. Just a quick overview, basically, the scope of the project has two goals. First and foremost is to bring the exterior of the Bank of America up to the 2010 federal ADA regulations. So Bank of America's been making improvements to their exterior branches throughout the northeast. For about six or seven years now, we've done literally about hundreds of them, all the way from here to Maine to Buffalo, all across the northeast. What that includes is reconstructing the ADA parking area, the crosswalks, the sidewalks, and providing ramps where necessary to comply with all dimensional and slope requirements for ADA regulations. That's in order to provide a path from the ADA parking spot to what we consider the accessible features on site, which would be the front entrance with an ATM and also the after-hours depository, which is on the side of the branch. Lastly, we are responsible, or I should say Bank of America is responsible, for providing a accessible route from the public sidewalk, which is the installation of an additional sidewalk over to Old Country Road. The second objective of the project was to perform some maintenance work in the parking lot, there's been some cracking and some wear and tear that the asphalt has faced over time, so as part of the ADA upgrades, Bank of America's looking to basically do a maintenance repair project on its, on its asphalt, we've highlighted some full-depth asphalt reconstruction.
Is that the area that you have here that shows milling?
Yeah, it's gonna be, basically, the entire parking lot at a minimum is gonna be milled, where we, we take off the top two inches of asphalt and lay down a fresh two inches to remove all the cracking. Anywhere we saw deeper potholes or larger areas of disrepair, we propose full-depth reconstruction to actually uproot the base of the asphalt and make sure that, you know, something like a simple mill and overlay may not, may not actually correct it moving forward. Since we've received some of the comments from the town, what we've, what we've also incorporated was a restriping plan for the parking lot in order to comply with the minimum parking space requirements. This reduced the parking on space overall from 31 down to 27, although for the town regulations for minimum amount of parking, based on a bank this size, we are well over the minimum allowable parking spaces for the branch, so we're happy to comply with that. We had originally prepared a response letter stating that we were in receipt of the dark skies comments, it sounds like there's, there's been many changes to these light fixtures in the existing branch for a long time. There is a similar program that Bank of America runs throughout, throughout the nation, and we get very involved in the northeast, where they remove a lot of their older light fixtures, and they basically strip all the lighting down, start from scratch, and install their newer LED fixtures that are more energy efficient, it's better, it provides a more uniform lighting pattern, and it ensures that all of their branches comply with New York ATM state lighting regulations. Originally, we had replied in the letter that we would pass it along to Bank of America and see if we could incorporate this into their, into their newest program push, they usually do about 100 or so per year in our area. I'm happy to report that actually just today, they had got back to us and said, we can actually just include it as part of this project. So you can kind of disregard our most recent comment where we had requested that we proceed with the ADA and then address the lighting at a time later in 2017, we'll actually be able to lump that into this project and we will basically prepare a full lighting design to comply with those dark skies requirements.
You've done hundreds of these, you said?
Yeah, a lot of them.
Tell the bank from now on whether it wants to be proposed, not last year.
Okay, absolutely, will do, will do.
Yeah, like you said, they've actually submitted, this is a plan I received earlier this week, which addressed, like you said, some of the parking comments. Haven't seen the lighting stuff yet, but like I said, the amortization period was up at the end of the year anyways, so instead of chasing them around, you know, appreciate the fact that they're gonna address them, you know, here.
Jefferson, can we, the board determine this to be administrative? I mean, there's really no building changes, it's all pretty much cosmetic and ADA improvement, so I don't think we need to have a public hearing if the board agrees?
I agree.
And we'll let them proceed administratively.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, great, good.
Cool.
Thank you very much.
Because of the lighting change, are you gonna have to submit another plan?
Yeah, we will, we're gonna, we're gonna prepare a revised set of plans that'll basically expand upon this and provide the lighting analysis.
And until I, I won't write a resolution until I get that, so...
Well, that rules my conscience.
Yeah, all right.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Twin Forks Beer.
Sorry. Yeah, another brewery, so what we've got here is a site plan application to construct an 11,480 square foot brewery with associated tasting room on a vacant piece of property located on Rayner Avenue. The parcel's located on the west side of Rayner, about 400 feet south of Rayner and Osborne, it's located in the industrial C zoning district. Right now, the lot is presently undeveloped in a wooded state. Surrounding uses, on the west side of Rayner, you've got an auto body repair shop to the north, a truck depot to the south, and then across Rayner to the east, you've got some single-family residences, so it's kind of a mixed-use surrounding area. It's a good site plan, there was just some issues, you know, with the parking, I spoke with Bob earlier, the land bank parking to the west, in the western, you know, the rear end of the parking lot, we originally looked at it maybe being land banked, we think we recommend that it be paved just because...
Well, you said grass.
Yeah, well, I, I've since kind of done a more thorough review of it, I'd recommend that it, you could actually push it back, because what we don't want to happen is, you know, we don't want parking to maybe spill over during peak periods, you know, summer season breweries get busy, you know, we don't want people parking on Rayner Avenue, so anything that we can do to increase the parking on site, you know, if you pushed the lot back, maybe throw a couple extra spaces in there and just pave everything.
Fifteen, twenty feet back?
Yeah, I mean, whatever, you know, you're not dealing with building setbacks in the rear of the property.
We have 12 stalls back here that were going to be land banked, which would, I mean, the space is gonna be there.
If you push those back and then create more...
You think we need more rather than, I thought it would be good to keep this natural as a...
I would rather err on the side of having more parking than to have not enough and then have people parking on Rayner just because you've got residences.
There, there is parking permitted on Rayner, I assume, that was one of my concerns.
Is that some good direction?
Because during busy times, people are gonna park there.
Yeah, I'll check on that, I don't, I don't...
I think the residents are gonna be upset about that.
I don't know the answer to that, I'll look into it.
Yeah, we have a total of 32 stalls on site, based on the size of the building, 29 are required, so we are three over the requirement. You think you're gonna need more than that of the people coming to this, I don't know how many people you think you're gonna have?
You know, it depends, if anything, it'd be on a weekend, and I mean, there's an area where the loading bays are, we're probably gonna be active on a Saturday or Sunday anyway, so there's no reason you can't add some parking in front of where the trucks, you know, would normally be during, during the business, you know, during the business.
Yeah, there is a lot of paving.
There's a lot, there's a lot of areas, like at least 100 something feet over here, which won't be utilized on Saturdays and Sundays, so that could actually effectively be an accessory use.
Yeah, the popularity of these facilities is just growing, I think almost exponentially.
Yeah.
You get one of these warm days in the summer, people are gonna be all over the place.
Yeah, I think we have enough in between.
And your neighbors across the street aren't gonna be very happy.
Well, that was my concern, just because, you know, if it was all an industrial area, you know, if there was parking allowed, but because you've got residences across the street, anything to contain the parking on the site, I think would be a...
Okay, yep.
A better move.
So you think we should add more parking?
If you can push it back, add a few spots in there and then pave, you know, what we thought was gonna be grass, you know, just kind of complete the parking lot.
But not that... Actually, I mean, if people could park here as long as the trucks weren't coming in, it would keep it as clear so the truck could pull, pull back out, but if they're on Saturday...
If we're gonna, if we're gonna stripe it as parking, we don't want it to be like, oh, it's only gonna be parking on the weekends when it's not being used, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we could show...
There's a lot of space there, there's a lot of space there.
You know, weekend parking or something.
We don't anticipate an overabundance of trucking anyway, especially on a Saturday, but we could put spots and have the path of the vehicles actually go around it anyway, I've seen that done too, it's not really, how much are you looking, how much do you think we can add by moving that back, because, you know, you can't double deck, park the cars.
No, but I mean, you could move it back another, you know, 20 feet and add a couple of, you know...
Got to shoe horn in there, shoe horn in there.
All right, let's move it back 20 feet. All right. Well, you, on the plan, you've got a 10 by 10 by four inch thick concrete slab, is there something going, going on there, like a tank or something in the back, land bank stalls on?
That's a dumpster.
That's dumpster pad. Oh, that's, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. And another question, the process water tank, I guess that was put in by the sewer district to get the sample in manhole? Yes, yeah, that's a tank we had a show inside the building, that's from Michael Reckle, he required, we have a holding tank inside the building.
That'd be inside, yeah.
Inside the building, correct.
The sample port, I think is gonna be outside, right?
It's the manhole outside, yeah.
There's a metered amount of effluent going into the sewer district, instead of holding tank, we're holding, and there's a pump, they'll pump a certain amount of determined effluent going to the sewer system.
Do we have a letter from them stating that?
He's working on it right now, we just talked to him.
He's writing us a water bill, a letter right now.
So the main entrance, most people enter from the rear?
From the...
Front. Front. The front?
Yep.
So there's a silo I saw on there, right?
That's, yeah, right, that would be part of like the grains that we bring in, if we can bring in, if we can do it inside, outside would help us, if it's something, you know.
What's the height?
Um, I got a couple of quotes, some are 30 feet, you know, total.
Lower than the top of the building?
I would say, based on elevations, I think they're all lower than the top of the building. It's gonna very look aesthetically nice, nice too, because it looks like a...
Have you guys seen the rendering from the ARB now?
That one?
Second. We got it right here.
Is this it?
That's just a bucket.
Does this building need a square foot? No, it doesn't, it's under 12,000 square feet. 12,000 is the cut off? Correct. That's showing the south.
It's showing the south as the east Rayner Avenue entrance, that looks like it's the, also the Rayner Avenue, that's the front of the building.
Yeah, ARB reviewed it.
ARB reviewed it twice, actually. That's part of their comments, yeah.
Uh, one of their comments was they wanted to see the rent, you know, they spoke about the location of the fence in the front of the property. Yeah, they have the updated version, it shows the fence behind the green screen, they should have a copy of this. Yeah, I got an email from them on March 20th stating that they reviewed the digital renderings and they recommend approval as is.
Just curious, the main entrance is in the front, you get all the parking, everything's in the back.
Well, it's all alongside, most of the parking is right.
The majority is probably in the back.
Yeah, the extra, extra parking is in the back, correct.
Well, and the, the rear part of the building is the brewery and the, you know, the warehouse operation, so the tasting room is gonna be right in the front of the building. We don't want traffic, you know, foot traffic going into the loading bays in the brewery area.
If the, the ARB's four comments in March 20th, is that...
Yeah.
You were right with those?
Yes.
Or they are right with them?
Yes.
So what, what are your proposed hours of operation?
Brewing hours, like, no, tasting room, it's gonna be Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
What hours?
Twelve to six or 12.
Yeah, twelve to six probably Friday, maybe 12 to seven Saturday, and probably 12 to six Friday. We'll see if Thursday works out too.
Pretty much, Monday through Wednesday, Monday, Thursday closed for tasting.
Friday through Sunday, you said?
Right, possibly Thursday.
Thursday is a question mark.
Yeah, we'll say Friday and Sunday for now.
But the latest, the tasting room would be open would be seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, that's it.
That's the plan, yes.
No special events or...
That would not be part of our immediate plans. All right, Marshall wants a fire sprinkler system, that's...
It's a mixed occupancy may require, I mean, that's a...
Stand.
Yeah, those that are...
You should include in there, no outdoor music. You wanna do something inside, that's one thing.
Okay.
There's neighbors there.
How much, how much of the building is going to be for your brewery?
As far as the production?
Percentage? Percentage of the building?
The tasting room is...
The biggest tasting area.
Taste room is only 1,140 square, 1,140 square feet, you know, 10 percent, so the other 90 percent would be production brewery, cooling, cooler system, wastewater treatment program.
So the lot is, is mostly wooded right now, right?
Mm-hmm.
What, what could we do to save as many trees as possible?
Well, we are leaving all this natural, all the air on the outside, we are leaving all this flat natural wood, if we move this back 20 feet, we're gonna lose another 20 feet of natural space, but all this is natural, so we have, right now, over 50,000 square feet of natural...
All around the perimeter.
Over on the perimeter of the property.
Jefferson...
We're adding landscaping and we have, you know, landscape buffering, you know, landscaping in front of the fence, that's now in here, plus additional street trees all around the front.
Jefferson and myself, we went out and did a site visit and we walked the whole site and the trees aren't really, you know, substantive, there's not a whole lot of, you know, really attractive stuff in there.
Not external.
Yes. Yes.
Where was your test board done?
Where? Up, up in the front?
Up in the front?
Yep.
Right here.
There it is, right here.
That was the highest, uh...
Okay. What's the elevation of the property here compared to the back, back here?
Uh, it's quite a difference. It's, uh...
Six and change, I think, right?
No, it's elevation, maybe like thirty to thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Back down in the front. Thirty-three. It's actually thirty-three.
Thirty-three to twenty-six.
In the back, it's like twenty-five back over here. We're pretty much following this grade coming back. There's the, the grade pitches from the front to back here, about four feet. Our loading docks back here will be down four feet below the building for loading, which works out very well, and it continues to slope down, and all the drainage is gonna be back here.
How deep is your drainage there?
How deep is the drainage pool back here?
Just curious.
I have to look at the drainage pool details in a second.
Six foot, did you, did you review it yet?
I, I just, you know, I haven't put any written comments to it, but as far as the depth of water goes, they...
Yeah, it's, you see where I'm going?
Yeah.
Twenty feet, right.
They've got groundwater in the neighborhood of twenty, uh, so those structures that are down in that loading bay, uh, it, it's likely that they don't provide that two-foot separation of groundwater at that point.
Yeah, we, actually, where the drainage pools are, we have ten feet down to groundwater at that point. But the, the cover is at twenty-four and gra- groundwater, groundwater is at fourteen.
Elevation fourteen.
Elevation fourteen, right. Now, covers are at elevation...
All right, I, I was reading as fourteen being fourteen feet deep. So you have, it would appear that they have added groundwater is at fourteen, so those structures would have the necessary separation.
Okay.
The one thing that I'm seeing on this drawing though, is based on the grading plan, um, the clearing limits are not consistent with that grading plan. And what I mean by that is you're showing proposed grades that go beyond the limits of clearing.
Those grades going beyond the limits of clearing.
This is a proposed grade to here, right? So in order, that's, you can't maintain that clearing limit. You gotta come back like this in order to do that. Likewise, that being the case with that proposed contour and over here as well. As far as your building goes, this, this corner of the building, in essence, is three and a half feet above grade.
Right.
So, you know, I don't, I mean, obviously, you can have that much exposed foundation, but I don't know if that's what you intend to do there. And then as far as what you're gonna do around here, I assume you're just gonna take existing grade and dive into the foundation.
Correct, correct.
But, you know, as far as those clearing limits goes, they should be adjusted to be consistent with the proposed grades around the building.
Yeah, that can be done. Uh, right, okay, good point.
So, are they ever gonna be a basement?
No.
No. There's, there's a vision, you have parking area over here. That's probably why these, these grades came in. That's what happened, never had.
And the only other question, um, 'cause it's been issues with breweries in town, uh, what's the plan for food service?
If, uh, when we get to that point, it'll be an outside, uh, outside our food retailer or...
Big food shop.
Something.
Yeah, no on-site food.
That's at this point, I started selling something. We're gonna get involved.
Are you guys twins?
Yes.
That's where I turned Falcon. Couple me?
Nice.
The only other question or point, the water availability and sewer availability will be important to us to have that in writing from them, that it's available.
Sewer department.
And water.
Yeah, he's sending, should be sending out over any day.
Since we have that, we'll send it in to Greg.
Okay.
Ooh, are you gonna have irrigation on-site?
Yes, I saw that. Uh, in the landscaped areas?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, we will have irrigation in there, yes.
Couple, couple of heads.
Okay, 'cause one, one of the things we've been trying to be constant on is not to use the town water for irrigation.
Well, water, we're looking into that.
We're looking into that.
For more than one...
More than one use.
Yeah, okay.
Gets a little expensive. Actually, even Mike Reckle even suggested that.
What other use other than irrigation?
Um, some of the rinsing, the tanks and...
You'll have a tough, well, health department may not like that, but that's fine. If you get it, that's fine.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
Stay under forty-five gallons. The well, well size.
Stay under forty-five gallons a minute.
And what you gotta go for, a full permit?
Forty-five gallons?
For a minute for your well.
Oh.
For the well.
Yeah. So, under, under forty-five gallons a minute.
Still has to be registered, but you don't have to go for here and you get permission, et cetera.
Most of the vegetation we're gonna plant is gonna be, you know, not require a lot of, a lot of water, basically. That's basically what we're doing.
Sorry.
Don't want worse things.
Yeah, they're on.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, love it.
All right, so when we have the public hearing, I would just suggest you be prepared, because I'm sure people across the street are gonna come out. They came out for the other projects alone there, so just kinda forward.
You gotta be a good neighbor.
Yeah.
When is, um, when is the...
Well, we have it scheduled. The next avail is, it would probably be the first meeting in June, just because of posting times and everything.
Do we need to meet here again for this, or this is...
Um, I, I don't know. I mean, a lot of the issues, you deal directly with the staff, and then we'll have a public hearing, then you'll probably come back before we get to any approval stages.
Okay.
After the public hearing, we'll give you some revised plans.
Yeah, give me revised plans, I'll review them.
You guys will need some beer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you guys down ready anywhere else?
We're under contract, not filing it yet.
I know why happens.
Yeah, we went out pretty soon, uh, twenty-fourteen.
I'm not sure.
Oh, you have been.
We're not brando.
The next item is Eagle, Eagle Auto Mall Warehouse Edition.
See if that can off.
Yeah, there it is.
This is full Greg today.
Pretty soon, no matter where you live, you can go to walk to a bar.
Is there anything wrong with that?
No.
No, right? That's, that's full planning.
Yeah, that's good planning.
Good planning.
Hey, how are you?
Welcome, Greg.
Stagger.
Need another...
All right, so what we've got here is a site plan application to construct, uh, it's about a twenty-one thousand square foot warehouse with an attached eighteen hundred square foot area to be used as an office space. Um, it's located at Eagle Auto Mall, which is on the northeast corner of the intersection of fifty-eight and Osborne Avenue. Uh, site's presently improved with a bunch of structures used for the operation of the auto sales business, um, including a fifteen thousand square foot metal warehouse towards the rear of the property, which the new building will be put next to. Um, went out and did a site visit, uh, back in November. Um, I just noticed a couple of things on the property. Um, one of the things was, uh, parking. Most of the parking throughout the site is not striped, or if it is striped, it's severely faded. Uh, one of the conditions from the approval of the original fifteen thousand square foot warehouse was that the striping was supposed to be redone and handicapped striping was supposed to be repainted. Um, I don't know if it was never done or if it just faded over the four or five years since approval, but, uh, you know, that's something that I noticed should be updated with the site. Um, one other thing that I noticed when I was out there is that on page four, the staff report, you can see that the, uh, there are residential properties to the east of the subject property. They're located on Woodcrest Avenue. Um, what's happening, there's a chain link fence on the property boundary with some, uh, some trees separating it, but there's a clear view from these people's backyards into the parking lot of the, uh, auto sales business. Um, you know, what staff recommended was, uh, you know, put up some kind of fence that obscures and creates a, you know, a visual screen from there, um, especially with a, you know, another twenty thousand square foot warehouse going in back here. You would anticipate that traffic on the property is gonna increase, um, you know, do what we can to kinda help the neighbors out on that end.
It's like a retaining wall there too, isn't it?
It's on, on the front of the property.
Oh, up here further.
Yeah, there's, it's a pretty significant grade change between the, uh, so it wasn't really, I, I didn't take issue with the front end, just 'cause of the grade change, but on the back end...
Okay.
Um, you know, that's probably why I would recommend to update that fence. Uh, received the lighting plan, which was okay. All our new lighting fixtures were compliant. The lighting on the site, as is, is dark sky compliant.
The fence, if we can get back to that, in the front of the property, that fence is just like horrible. It's not even there. It's all, it's all falling down, so why would you put a new fence in the back and leave it horrible in the front?
There, there's no fence in the front. That's...
Something's all knocked over. I saw it the other day.
I think this is residential fences. Ours is all chain link, all the way to the front.
So the chain link is still up in the front?
The chain link, up in the front where the planter boxes are, where the elevation is, the chain link comes up, but to the very front of the property?
Very front.
That's Lollies and whoever else is property. That's not ours.
So there's no buffer towards the front there?
Just other by the natural green trees where the, the chain link's behind it, but where the elevation levels back off, that's, uh...
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, landscaping was also something that was noticed when I did a site visit. There's really no landscaping in the front of the property along fifty-eight. Um, we recommend that the applicant, you know, plant some trees along fifty-eight. Uh, I think I pulled out a, a bow hall red maple, just due to the nature that it grows vertically. You know, I know with the auto business, you don't wanna a large canopy, trees dropping sap and, you know, leaves on cars, so, you know, something that could grow vertically just to screen, you know, the buildings in the back. You know, they can be pruned from the bottom up to still give visibility to the cars in the front lot. It wouldn't obscure anything too much, you know, in that respect.
I mean, setbacks okay, no zoning?
Yep, no, no zoning, setbacks are okay. I mean, it's, you know, it's not increasing impervious. It's already paved back there.
What's, what's the present building used for?
Uh, storage for parts.
And what's the new building up here as well?
Storage for parts and accessories.
Ooh, a lot of plots.
What's that?
Business is good?
Yes.
It's okay. Will this, will you be removing some of the stuff from the existing warehouse into this one? Is it gonna, or is it all gonna be? 'Cause I know there was some issues with fire marshal and building department on the initial warehouse.
The, the initial, what's in this warehouse is gonna increase, and then the buildings that we have across the street, that inventory is gonna come over here.
Across the street where?
You're, you're talking the south side of fifty-eight, that building?
Well, no, the, uh, the, the fifteen thousand square foot warehouse that's on the property right now, that this one is going next to. Um, one of the comments from the building department was that, uh, it was noted, noted by the fire marshal that it had high combustible storage. Uh, I think there was some back and forth with the fire marshal regarding that.
All the parts come in pretty much cardboard boxes, so, but it's metal parts and cardboard, so that's high combustible.
Tell me about moving things from across the street. Where are you, on the, on the south side of fifty-eight?
The, yes.
Were you storing some material there?
Correct. There are some buildings across fifty-eight that we, we wanna bring over.
That's your FKA three-one-seven site plan application?
Yeah, we, we had discussed that a while ago, back in October with Doug Adams. They were gonna do site improvements, paving on the parking lot. The, uh, was it the G, the, right now, it's a used truck dealership, used car?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you ever tap into that?
I, I received new plans from Doug Adams a couple of weeks ago, so we're gonna do a public hearing on that and move forward. Um, one thing that I wanted to talk to the board about was, actually Jeff, Jeff Siemens' recommendation for the SECR, um, the traffic impact study was brought up, and he recommended a traffic impact study. Um, you know, due to the, uh, proposed parking, onsite traffic flows during periods of peak, vehicle deliveries, um, I wanted to know if the board thinks a traffic impact study would be warranted in this case, if they think it's appropriate.
I know.
You know, if it's gonna, if it's gonna...
Is this gonna bring more cars to the property?
No, sir.
No, that's just for storage.
Just for all parts deliveries of parking things.
Just pulling it together.
Well, the front could be an office, right?
Mm-hmm.
So are people that are already working there gonna be relocated to that office?
Actually, the people that are currently in a, in the trailer on the side of the current building is gonna be in the office space.
I mean, not that this has any bearing, but is that a separate business venture?
No. We, we deal in wholesale parts.
The only reason I asked you this because, um, to, to put in a building this size, I mean, obviously, business has to be very, very good. You're planning on getting...
The truth is wholesale parts is a very tight margin business, like extremely tight, and to do well, you need to have volume, and we deliver parts all over...
You're using, you need the space for the purchasing power.
Purchasing power, exactly. So, and we deliver, uh, parts and accessories to all the GM dealerships and...
No, I, I, I know your trucks are really what your trucks are.
Yeah. But to make the, we're actually trying to, like, make it just more efficient than anything else.
Jeff, um, any...
Where your, uh, vehicle, uh, transport take place, you know?
Are you meaning, uh, new vehicle transport?
Hmm.
When there are new vehicles. Sorry about that. Uh, right, right in front of, when you come up the alleyway here, have you noticed that the parking space is where the stripes used to be? It's like a forty foot wide. They do it right there on the side where the planters are. There's two islands on the side?
Right.
So that driveway is extremely wide. There's gotta be at least sixty foot, so they just pull the truck to the side and unload right there into, and that's where the new car storage is.
So you're not losing any of that flexibility with, with the building?
Everything in the, everything in the back is, is my wholesale parts business.
Okay.
So, uh, if you're there at night, it has my trucks there, but during the day, those leave, go on deliveries. I mean, stagger the deliveries.
Yeah.
And the other ones gonna go next.
Well, no, that's the front. That's the, that was taken up here.
So, are there currently cars stored there now in that area?
On the proposed side of where we have every, uh, where we wanna put the building is where we normally store our trucks, and the other side is, is customer parking. When we put the new building in, we're gonna rearrange the, um, um, the trucks, so we'll keep them When we put the new building in, we're going to rearrange the, um, the trucks so we'll keep them and the employee parking on the other side and move, um, where we store the, the pallets and stuff like that will wind up going indoors for a faster turnaround.
So during construction, when you lose all of that space, where is everything going to be stored?
We would probably have to utilize some of the space, our customer, uh, parking down here and our, our used car, um, line, planning on, uh, holding back on inventory a little bit so we have a little bit more space. We usually, um, stock around 300 used cars. We're probably going to cut it in half. We're actually down to half about now because we were anticipating, um, doing this soon, but we probably jumped the gun a little bit on that.
I think from what I've seen over there is, is probably more of a reorganization.
Mm-hmm.
What could be done.
Yes.
Because there's, I mean, from the photo, I know this is an old photo, but it's fairly consistent with, you know, whenever we go there for meetings, that there's a lot of empty spaces. So it could be reorganized, you know, to make that area clear and the front area clear for delivery.
Correct. You know, at the end, you know, at the end of the year and stuff like that, there's, like, right now my inventory is really empty, so I have a lot of space and so forth, so there is some control on that. So during construction, we're just going to hold back on new car inventory so we have the room to do the construction itself. But after that, everything should go back to normal.
One other, uh, one other question I had which didn't make it to my staff report. When I went out there, I noticed that there's a, a large number of shipping containers that are at the rear of the property.
It was my next question.
Yeah, and it looks like that, that's an old area. I think they've kind of expanded a little bit more since then. What's the plan for them? Is some of that stuff going to be going into this warehouse? Are those pods going to be removed at all, or? And what are the?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Alright, because the, I mean, the plan does note an outdoor storage area behind there. So I mean, if we want to, you know, if we contain it to that area just so it doesn't sprawl out over the whole, the whole back end of the property.
There, there is a possibility we might want to keep some of the containers, uh, just for certain storage that we put in them. It's actually safe, um, we also deal in performance engines and those steel containers are a safe place to store them and we probably want to save some for that. But if not necessar, not necessarily.
Alright.
Just right now, some of our cap pads are over here so we can straighten up and just keep it.
Yeah, I think what happened was we wound up having to move a couple during...
Something.
Stuffing, and they just, they just didn't put them back exactly where they were.
So I know, I know the cross access that was mentioned doesn't come into play.
No.
But where is that exactly on here?
It's, it's up towards the, you can see it here. It's actually right through here. It's on the front end.
Oh, it's up here then?
Yeah.
Where you're in next.
Yeah, where this property lawn goes out, it's back.
This is it right here?
It, it comes, it comes in through the next property.
Okay, can we show it on, on any revised plan?
I think.
Is that it?
Yeah, if you go to the.
It's on the next page?
Yeah, the portion up there.
Front floor. Is it, uh, oh, yeah, there it is, okay. Good.
It's always good to have it to refer to later on.
Okay, so, anything else Greg?
Is there a height call for in the, the roughing in the back of the photo area?
Yeah.
That is, well, that's where the fence is going to go. Yeah, how high, how high in the fence, Greg, on the, on the east side?
What do we recommend? Six foot, you know, it's, you know, basic stockage, as long as it obscures the, uh...
Now, can I ask you a question on that?
Hmm?
Being that we have an existing chain link through there, would the slats be acceptable?
What, what's the condition of it?
Well, the owner had noted that, um, you know, there's some foliage overgrowth back there that does need to be cleaned, and I know you had brought a.
I have, an arborist coming around.
I was going to say botanist. An arborist.
Arborist.
Was going to do some clearing. He felt that the fence was in a condition that was suitable to be able to maintain, and, uh, we thought maybe we could, if it was suitable structurally, that we could put some slats in it.
When we get, when we get to the public hearing, we'll see if the residents have.
Yeah.
There's actually, this picture doesn't show, but there's actually a lot of the arbor bydes, is that right? If not, I'm not an arborist, but the arborist told me if I cut down the other trees that grew over the arbor bydes that you, actually probably when they made, did the parking lot, they made them plant the last time, they should come back to life and, and, um...
But I don't, I don't know if we want to cut down any trees.
No, but, you know, trim.
Well, if it's nuisance, you know.
Right.
Try to make it right for the neighbors.
Yeah.
I guess the point is that, you know, he's obviously motivated to, whether it's, you know, a slat or it's a stockage fence, you know, something to.
I'd just like to verify the condition of it.
Yeah.
I don't know, Vinnie, Vinnie will probably go out there too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bathroom's in here? Yes.
So you're just going to hook up to, um...
I'll hook up, the existing sewer comes in.
Existing sewer, yeah.
Um, over here. Right now, believe it or not, this, this building doesn't have any sanitary in it, the 15,000. This one does. That's why we're bringing this up to code sprinkling, um, bathroom facilities, and that's going to be connected to the, uh, the sewer that's on site.
So this building actually isn't next to, it, it will be in addition.
Right.
Um, so now being one, there is, uh, a fire line being brought in, fully sprinkled, um, office area bathrooms.
Okay.
It's going to be, it's going to be gravity.
Wow.
Yes.
Because that's a low. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, our elevation actually is, uh, back there is quite a bit, yeah. Yeah, we, actually, one of the first things that we checked was, uh...
Oh, it's Michael, yes, there was, uh...
We've, we found the inserts.
Now, the grade there definitely helped.
A long way.
Surely is.
Alright, so I, I think, uh, the board's consensus on a traffic study is needed. Do we think we need it? Doesn't sound like there's going to be.
I'm, I'm satisfied with the description. I was more concerned about offloading the vehicles and having lost the space up here, so that's, that's good.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do you have a schedule for something, Jerry?
Yeah, that's next, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, I mean, you guys will probably look at the first meeting in June.
First, first meeting in June?
I think it's June the first, but I'll double check.
Okay.
One and a half week.
Well, it'll be up to you guys to, you know, post everything and get it in the paper in time, so it's important that you meet the deadlines and just stay in touch with the staff.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great day.
Okay, next item is Calvertin Distribution Pods.
And you were here early too, sorry. You were here early.
No, that's all could have been worse, Greg. He like, he likes sitting through the meetings.
Get out of the office, I'm asking.
So we're kind of in the final stages here, um, before final approval. What I just wanted to bring up before the board was a comment that was raised by one of Vinnie Gaudiello's comments about securing the recharge basin in the front of the property. You know, because you've got the charter school, I think Vinnie's concerns were, you know, if a kid or something happens to walk, go into the recharge basin, you know, liability for the town, something like that. So I mean, the question is, what would be acceptable to the board? I've spoken with Gary, you know, he wouldn't be opposed to doing, you know, a chain link fence along the property line. I think he said, you know, he has plans to, for snow removal, you know, dump it into the basin. So it's a, you know, question of what the board would find acceptable in terms of securing.
From a water standpoint, uh, the most recent tests show that it's perched as fast as you could put water in it. It's all sand. There's no, there was, it'll be a dry basin forever. There's no, no question about it. So it's not, these are three-on-ones, there's 20-foot setback, um, just a lot easier to run the snow here and just dump it back in the hole. That was the whole point of the design. We do these all over this place.
How deep is it going to be though?
Six to eight.
Six to eight feet?
For the three-on-one, you have about 50% riprap and about 50% grass. So it'll, but it, it'll never hit the riprap.
Yeah.
It just goes vertical immediately.
Well, so, I mean, the fence in the back would, would put, create a border from the school, right?
Yeah. You're not going to have any kids wandering up and, you know, you've got a retaining wall here with planting, so I mean, if he did a chain link fence, you know.
This is natural.
Yeah.
We're asked to keep this natural.
No, there is, there is planting over here.
Yeah, it's about three foot. So happy to roll a chain link fence if that makes a difference.
Sounds fine with me.
Yeah.
Just have to make an effort for the school, so.
Not in front of them.
No, it would be along the.
Western boundary.
Yeah, along the western boundary, yeah.
Most logical is to separate them.
Yeah.
And we're going to get elevation always.
There's still a major area, so it'll be along this.
Everything's dead over here.
Well on site. And we have a, and we have a commitment and a understanding, it's a commission, condition of our approval that before we see all this thing, the other stuff's got to be dealt with.
Well, that's my question.
That's fine.
They can start now on that.
Hey, it's, we're going to wind up building and they're going to pay us for it. So I'd rather have it under my own control.
But if we wait for approval, you may miss this season.
I would think that this is the end of this and we would have approval at the next meeting because this is ready to go around. From my understanding, it was the board.
Preliminary or final?
Construction drawings were submitted months ago.
Oh, we did the preliminary.
Yeah, you did the preliminary. He's, he's updated the plans and he's going to have the landscaping.
So you'll make it.
Yeah, I, I did it as an affirmative undertaking on our behalf, so I wouldn't have the circus. We'll just, the rest is just money and cents.
Okay, very good.
So chain link fence along this side?
Yeah, from the school.
Uh, how high? Six foot?
Four foot, six.
Four, six, six?
Kids got to retain all that too, so.
Six foot black chain link?
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think that, um, the board may consider a covenant that requires that they maintain that basin. No disrespect to Mr. Kropnik, but every recharge that's built has a sand bottom. So the concern is over the course of time, the bottom silts up and the percolation rate from there is compromised. As I said, we have standards, subdivision standards that talk about how to properly secure recharge basins. And, and though this is not one that would be dedicated to the town due to the proximity and the fact that there was no border between the public, the traveled way of the vehicle travel way of the site and the area that, that the board may, you know, put something in there that, you know, talks about annual maintenance and stuff.
Do you want annual scarification as necessary? Annual scarification, churn it up as necessary.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that's.
That's fine.
We just want to make sure it's a recharge basin and not become a potential waste.
No.
Yeah, not a recharge. Not a problem. Happy to do it.
That was it?
Thank you.
Okay, before we go to the resolutions, um, any comments on the resolutions from the public? Anyone from the public, public want to comment on the resolutions? Okay, um, okay, we'll go right to the resolutions, the first one.
I'll move the resolution, uh, number 33 extending, uh, Henry Silverman's extension.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution 33, extension of time for minor subdivision of Henry Silverman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's adopted. Number two on the agenda?
Make a resolution, uh, motion that resolution number 34 for the Jamesport Farm Brewery be moved.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve, uh, James, Jamesport Farm Brewery, resolution 34. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Note 219.
At your final record, we did not get any samples.
No, well, maybe that'll be like a final approval condition.
Fine print, as they say.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
To make a motion that we move the minutes of the red planning board for the April 6th, 2017 meeting. So moved.
Thank you. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of April 6th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted.
Jeff? Just a question. On the Silverman, it says, it says this is the fifth, 50th extension.
Indefinite.
Why is that?
State law. Uh, as a result of the recession, the state amended the statute that they, number of extensions is indefinite.
Get some UBA cause for that project.
We should have Dick Ayler or something like that next time he comes in.
Yeah.
As a never-ending story.
Yeah, so they'll just pile up.
Yeah.
Some meeting will have six and seven of them.
And then 20 years from now, we'll kind of go, we approved what, when?
Yeah.
Of course, 20 years from now, I won't care. I'll be in a nursing home somewhere. Greg, it'll be Greg's fault. Yeah. You can blame him. And Emily? You can go back and look at the camera 20 years from now and look how young you used to be.
I don't know, I don't know if Emily's going to be here in 20 years.
Okay, motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Have a nice weekend, everybody. You missed it. It was a big brawl. The board was arguing. You missed it all.
Tomma tape.
Headlines, headlines.
Yes.
Question for you.
Public reporter, huh?
I like your shoes. Yes?
Winburne, then?
Yeah, opening day was yesterday. It's all just straight into, straight into.
Greg, I know you were looking for comments on those two.
Right across the street. The brewery.
Mike can show you that brewery segment just so you know. Good luck.
They're not, they're not an existing curve there that's not lined up with the rest of the car, gentlemen. So, and I, I know that that kind of makes a little bit of an issue from the sidewalk and where you want to go with it. So I'm going to go take a look at that right now and take some.
Yeah, whenever you get, you know, we're still going to do the public hearing. Yep.
Going on?
Uh, he's Jeff.
No, I'm Jeffrey. He's Jeffrey.
I am?
Are you sure?